Welcome to the October 7th Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will have our call to order and our roll call, please. If you would, stand with me. Commissioner McGlaughorn has gone off our invocation.
Chairman, pray. Join the God, curse him. First of all, we come to thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Ask now, Lord, that you bless this meeting and help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you would remain standing, I'm going to invite Hannah Bateman from Farmville Central up, and she's going to lead us in our pledge. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Bateman, and I'm currently a senior at Farmville Central High School. And I am the vice president for the Farmville Central FFA chapter, as well as the president for the Tidewater Federation FFA chapter. So if you do not know, FFA stands for Future Farmers of America. And so we deal a lot with agriculture and helping students get involved in different agriculture aspects, specifically in Pitt County. I also run my family's farm just outside of Greenfall, and we are called Pine View Livestock, if any of you want to come say hey. And so thank you for having me this evening, for this meeting, and at this time, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Got a couple of changes before we approve the agenda. We want to move, are we moving one presentation or all?
Move all three.
Okay, we're going to move all presentations above the public addresses to the board, because we've got a few of those.
Motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Yeah, one more thing, and we need to remove items four and six under items for consent.
Four and six.
Mm-hmm.
We're moving them to items for discussion.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. You want them for discussion?
Yes, just.
I think she just wants some discussion on them, so let's just move them to discussion.
After the beginning.
We're going to move them under the two items. We'll have four items, four items for discussion.
Okay. A move that we approve the agenda, moving presentation above public addresses to the board, and then modify items four and six from the consent agenda to items for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the second. Please vote. Okay, and we will move on to presentations.
And before you go down, if you all will approve, consider approval of the resolution recognizing the 2024 Pitt County Little League Softball World Series team, the domestic violence proclamation as well.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All right, and if the 2024 Little League Softball World Series team and coaches would please come forward. And just line up in a semicircle. We are so appreciative that you all are here with us this evening, and the Board of Commissioners have prepared a resolution that I'd love to read to you this evening. Intended to be the County Board of Commissioners' Resolution of Recognition honoring the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team. It reads, "Whereas the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team played softball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team earned a place in the Little League Softball World Series, the North Carolina team showcased exceptional skill and control throughout the World Series, securing a decisive victory with commanding performances in every game, with all games being aired on ESPN and the championship game being aired on ABC. And whereas the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team went 5-0, outscoring their opponents 44 to 0, allowing no runs to be scored against them. They had wins over teams from the Philippines, Italy, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania, and Louisiana in the final game. This was a historical win, as this was the 50th anniversary of the Little League Softball World Series. The team is made up of a group of young women, who their coaches will announce when we pass that certificate, and their coaches are listed in this resolution as well. And it says, now therefore be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team, and congratulates the players, coaches, and their families for winning the 2024 Little League Softball World Series. Adopted this the 7th day of October by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman Mark Smith and attested by Kimberly Hines. Clerk to the board, if you will present that, to head coach Brad Mettis."
World Series champions. Very proud of you guys.
Thank you. So first, we will recognize the coaches, and we have a certificate of recognition awarded to Brad Mettis for participating as head coach in the 2024 Pitt County Girls All-Star Softball Team, presented by the Board of Commissioners this day, signed by Mark Smith, chairman, and if you will present that.
Congratulations.
We have the same certificate for Brandon Peebles for participating as assistant coach. Brandon?
Congratulations.
Or Coach Peebles, I should say. And then the third is awarded to Percy Edwards, Coach Edwards, for participating as an assistant coach.
And this guy was my assistant coach for a lot of years. Wonderful. So I know you guys had a good assistant coach, because he kept me out of a lot of trouble.
Congratulations to you guys.
Hey, we had his daughter in the daycare, too.
All right. Candace Lynn. Last but not least, Aurora Edwards.
Thank you. And if we could get together for a picture, we want the girls in the front row, and coaches, and us behind. That'd be perfect. I think you're okay with that.
You're okay?
If that's okay. I'm here to your next one. The second proclamation we have this evening, if those who are here to celebrate Domestic Violence Awareness Month, would please come forward. Excellent. Elena, we have Senator Defense Protection. It is Pitt County's pleasure to present to you this evening a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it reads, "Whereas one in every three women and one in four men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. And whereas, when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim, but also leaves a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas, the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas, it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas, important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence and their families. And whereas, Pitt County continues to make ending domestic violence a priority. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to work towards the elimination of personal and institutional violence against domestic violence victims adopted this 7th day of October 2024, signed by Mark C. Smith, chairman, and attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board."
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Excellent. That's all we've got.
While we have just a minute, I want to recognize a few people we have in the audience. We have our district attorney, Ferris Dixon, with us this evening. We have our sheriff, Paula Dance, with us, and we have the mayor of Winterville, Ricky Hines. I think I saw him. Thank you all for being with us tonight. Okay, next up is USDA Rural Development, Reginald Speight.
Mr. Speight has come at our request, on the request of some board members who wanted to get an update on USDA services in our community, and particularly how our residents can best access those services.
Very good. To Chairman Smith and other members of the board, to Madam County Manager and staff, good afternoon to each of you. I am Reginald Speight, the USDA Rural Development State Director. I have prepared, and I believe shared a report with you, and I'm going to make my comments brief, Mr. Chairman, so that it can entertain as many questions as you would like. But just as a quick rundown for USDA Rural Development, you will see that our mission is to improve the quality of life and economy of individuals who live in rural areas. And we do it through several things, several ways we do this. We do it through rural housing development, so we can actually build houses. We can renovate structures. We can do site development for housing construction. We also have within our portfolio our multifamily housing. Now, multifamily, for, just for your consideration or discussion this evening, multifamily housing is handled out of our national office. That is not anything that comes under my jurisdiction here in the state of North Carolina, but we do have multifamily housing as one of our components. We also have what we call our Community Facilities Program, and so that's for essential service facilities. So we can build town halls, and hospitals, and schools, and community centers, what have you. So that's in our Community Facilities portfolio. And we also have our Rural Business Services component. So for a small business that is just starting out, now, we do not replace the Small Business Administration, but we can leverage and supplement some of the things, whatever, for a business that is just starting out, for either equipment or expansion of an operation. I can tell you that a large part of our portfolio and what we did right after COVID was mainly to refinance debt so individuals could feel, businesses could expand their footprint, so that they're able to hire more staff, because we are convinced that small businesses is the way to build economies in rural areas. And then last but not least, we have our Rural Utility Services component for rural utilities, rural utility services. So we do water and wastewater programs. We do broadband. We do telecom. We do different things in that space as well for utilities. And so in our space, broadband is considered to be a utility, just like electric and plumbing. We consider it to be a utility in our space, and so within our Rural Utility Services program, we do provide those services. This is statewide. It is United States and territory-wide. I just became the state director for the state of North Carolina. So for these, I have included here the website for USDA for Rural Development. We operate, I gave you just a quick snapshot, but in totality, we run about 70 different programs. And the reason why I provide the website and the reason why I provide eligibility information, different programs that we have, now, I'm still the federal government, and the federal government doesn't always do things or whatever that is most logical. So I gave you the websites, because pretty much all of our programs may have a different definition of rural, and may have a different income level for eligibility. So it's nowhere close to being as simple as I presented to you, okay? But as I said, I wanted to present the website and the eligibility, and if you go to the eligibility map, and you will see all of the different programs that I've shared with you. If you actually put in an address, it will tell you if the project you're interested in is in an eligible area. For us, we work off of census tracts, okay? We work off of census tracts for the work that we do, but that's why I said, if you go to the eligibility map, put in an address for the particular program that you're interested in, whether it's housing, multifamily, business programs, community facilities, it will tell you if that project is eligible at that address. Mr. Chairman, I, just like I said, and I also included a spreadsheet of investments that we have made here just since 2021. I've only been in this role since 2021, but I wanted to share with you the investments that we have, and let me just go through and highlight a few things for you, just so you will see some of the repetitions and why. As you can see, you will see the Nathan R. Cobb Foundation, which is in Farmville. You will see them listed here a couple of times. One, if the project is too large for a particular grant source that we have, we have the opportunity to look at other grant opportunities to fulfill the request. Similarly, if there is another request that happens in another fiscal year, our fiscal year runs from October to September, that entity can come back and request additional dollars for additional opportunities if they have a need. I wanted to let you know, I see, you probably see on this list, Pitt Memorial Hospital Incorporated, that is the foundation. So just trust me. Now, we know that that name is, the names have changed, but just know that that Pitt Memorial Hospital one that you see there is for the foundation, okay? So as I said, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there were any questions that anyone had, any comments, anything that I can address while I'm here with you.
Any questions for Mr. Speight?
Well, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Speight.
Good evening.
And we're glad to have you.
Good to be here.
I became concerned about the USDA after attending the NACO conference.
Okay.
And I am on the Rural Action Caucus.
Yes.
And at that caucus meeting, presentations were made, and concerned me about rural housing, and we get questions from people, families, who go over to the office, and they don't seem to get any assistance. I don't know whether they are not eligible or whatever, but after hearing the presentations, I said to the county manager, I said, "I'm just not sure that we're getting all that we can get from USDA."
Yes.
And so this is why you're here this evening.
I get it. I figured when I was summoned, oh, yeah, there were some questions, but let me say thank you very much for that, Commissioner Huggins, and let me say, part of our challenge, and when I say part of our challenge, is, and this is not an excuse, it's a challenge that we have. You'll see in your, the document that I provided, that I provided to you, that we have two offices in what we call Area 6. Area 6 covers 17 counties. I have five staff for those 17 counties. Another challenge that we have, the challenge that you have in Greenville proper, is that Greenville is no longer rural. That is the challenge that we have in Greenville proper, based on population. Greenville is no longer considered rural for our housing program. I will say to you, as it is with, and you've heard about some of the other programs, whatever that I named, water sewer projects, that we typically work with municipalities, similarly with our community facilities, typically it is a municipality. With housing, you're talking a high-demand program, and when I say high demand, to give you an idea, the state of North Carolina, our production level is, we battle between first, second, and third with California and Texas. Rural Development has this process that we call pooling, and so after a certain point of time of the year, as I said, our fiscal year runs from September to October, around April or May of every year, there is a pooling, and then every state who is producing can go to that pool and get additional dollars from other states. North Carolina, we're at a 285% production rate. So not only have we spent all of our money, we've done it another one and a half times. So the challenge is, we have huge demand, huge demand. I could tell you, if we stop taking applications now, we have enough to do three years' worth, but our processes will not allow us to not take applications. So I could tell you internally, we have a civil rights office. I get a lot of civil rights claims, as do other states, because people are saying to us, "There is no way in this world it should take that long for us to get housing." Unfortunately, the answer is yes, it does, with Rural Development, because of demand, demand and resources. So I'm hearing what it is that you're saying, the challenge is kind of inborn to what we do based on supply and demand. I don't know, does that answer, I know that's not a consolation.
No.
That doesn't help at all. Unfortunately, that's the response to the question.
I don't know.
Commissioner Huggins, I think she.
Sorry.
Well, and you say you have five people, five people on staff.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And helping with housing, and you say you do five departments.
Yes, yes, yes. That's five people for all 70 programs.
For all 70 programs.
Yes, ma'am.
And how do we get the information out to the community to apply for programs with you?
Well, let me say this. One of two ways. I'm still old school. I was born in Farmville, so I'm still old school, and I still know that there are those who still like a piece of paper. We still will do a paper application, okay? You can do the application online, but I do understand in rural areas, connectivity, broadband, or what have you, is a problem. Any individual who is interested can call, you'll see also, the most important piece of information I can share with any of you this evening is my cell phone number and my email address at the top of this page.
Give it.
I beg your pardon? What was that? I'm sorry.
It's on the top of your page, his information.
Oh, okay. Yep, all of my contact information is there. Any individual, I put my cell phone there simply because, to serve 17 counties, the probability of you finding people in our offices, and I said, this is one of six districts, six areas, it is my impression and my desire that we go where the people are. And if we have to go to someone's house to do an application, that's where I want them to go. So I'm not that concerned necessarily by individuals not finding people in the office, as long as they call that number and get a response. If they're not getting responses, then I have a problem. But I have no issues with staff going to individuals to do applications in any of these 17 counties or the 100 counties we serve. But I will say that any individual who is interested in this program, give them my cell number. That's why I put it up there. I share my cell number everywhere I go. I could tell you my comms team, they don't like it. They're like, "Why in the world would you give your cell phone in a crowd of 600 people?" Because the only way you can get these programs and services is if you know how to get to them. And you call me, and I'll get them to the right person.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm happy to. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McGlaughorn, you were next, and then we'll go to Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speight, again, thank you for coming.
Good to see you, sir.
We go back a long way.
A long way.
It's always good seeing you.
Great to see you, sir.
One of the concerns that I have, you mentioned that Greenville is not considered a rural area. Now, of course, we're talking about Pitt County.
Yes.
In general.
Correct.
So what part of Pitt County would we consider rural areas?
Good question, sir. Again, let me say, one, dependent upon the program. I can tell you, for the most part, Greenville and Winterville, you can almost factor out everything, okay? Because of income and population. But then when you go around to your Adens, your Griffins, your Farmvilles, your Bethels, you can do that. In fact, you will see, you probably see on your page here of your Excel spreadsheet, we just recently signed off for a site development loan with Xcede, that they're going to do a site development in Bethel. Not only are we going to fund the site development, we're going to fund, if he comes back to us, or if they come back to us, we're going to fund the development of those houses in Bethel. So I will say to you, anything outlined in Pitt County, because you have a valid point, the county surrounding areas, typically those are eligible areas, but as I said, you go on your eligibility map, it'll tell you specifically addresses, locations, what have you, for eligibility for any of those 70 programs that I've shared with you.
Can you think of any financial assistance that you have given to rural area recently in Pitt County?
That spreadsheet that I shared with you?
Uh-huh.
Those last three, to Pitt Memorial Hospital, to ECU, and to Xcede. And you'll see the dollar amounts over there, $991,000 to Pitt Hospital Foundation, $975 to ECU, $975,000 to ECU, and $113,300 for the site development for the project we're working on in Bethel.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Don't see any families.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Mr. Speight.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a pleasure seeing you.
Good to see you, Commissioner.
I'm appalled that my area is not in the qualifying area. All of it is basically rural, out of the city. So what can we do to have you consider it when we are the poorest area in the county?
Remind me again of your area, because I know I travel.
North of the river.
I got it.
Old River Road.
That's right.
Pattolus.
Bellevore.
Everything in between. Yes, Bellevore, a huge area in Bellevore.
So it's not that you're not in a rural area.
Huh?
It's not that you're not in a eligible area.
Okay.
So you're, and again, I want to be careful to say, use the eligibility map. So individuals who want to come, and individuals can use that map as well. Anyone who has internet can put their address in and tell whether or not they are eligible for any of our programs, in any of those programs. They can determine eligibility before they start the tedious process of an application, because it is a tedious process. Now, we don't do, now, we can find, we can be the bank. So for housing, we can be the bank. For individuals who may not have, who are unbanked, we hold the mortgage on a number of houses for individuals who want USDA Rural Development to be their bank. The issue is, and one of the challenges is, one, demand, that I've already shared, but then, two, we have to have the same information that a bank is going to have. So we need to have the income type things or whatever. We need all of those things that we need to have in order for us, before we turn ground. So we can build a house. We can help purchase an existing home. There could be a home sitting on a lot, and we can do the demolition and build there, and then wrap the whole cost into the financing. So it's zero percent down and zero closing cost. And typically, our interest rates run below subprime, below prime.
Because we did go to you before we came up with the need for community facility over there, and we didn't qualify.
Yes.
So they've changed evidently qualifications.
And once again, different programs, you qualify, different areas. Yes, ma'am.
You hear from me.
Sounds good. You know how to, I know you have myself.
Are there any other questions from commissioners for Mr. Speight? Okay, Mr. Speight, thank you for coming out and speaking.
Thank you for the invitation, and I'll come back every month. Is that all, how often do you meet? I'll come back every month if you like me to.
We meet twice a month.
Oh, I could do that, too. But thank you for your time.
We miss all on you again.
And let me say to you, thank you for your interest. Not too many commissioners call me interested in the service delivery to the citizens, and I want to tell you, anytime you want me to come back, staff to come back, what have you, I'm happy to do so, and I just want to thank you for your interest in serving your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is public addresses to the board. I will ask the attorney to read our guidelines for that, and then Madam Manager will call those names up. call those names up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
First person signed up is Dr. Mark Serby.
I'm here once again to discuss the proposed RFP for jail medical services at tonight's Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. It has come to our attention that the Sheriff's Department has chosen to renegotiate the current jail medical services contract with the current vendor, Wellpath, rather than adhering to the directive of, directive of this board to pursue an RFP. During the Commissioners' meeting on July 22nd, Chief Capehart explained that the Sheriff's Department felt a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers in seeking an RFP due to an unexpected 22% increase request. However, it remains unclear what factors led to their change of position, regardless of any renegotiated price. As witnessed previously by this board, after the first year of the contract, the current vendor increased their fees by 31%. Then this past April, they submitted a letter requesting an additional 22% increase without any identifiable changes in the scope of their service. At the last Commissioners' meeting, I highlighted numerous significant clinical deficiencies in the current healthcare services provided to our jail. It is also public record that the county incurred an overrun of $352,000 last contract year, exceeding the contracted cost pool amount of $275,000. Furthermore, this does not include other tangible county costs associated with increased police officer involvement due to inmates being turned away from the jail booking area and taken to the ED. In our opinion, there should be no hesitation in pursuing a new RFP for jail medical services, which not only holds vendors accountable, but also ensures the best value for services and transparency in spending taxpayers' dollars. As expressed during the July 22nd board meeting, Commissioners shared the sentiment that they were placed in a predicament where the current vendor executed a proverbial bait and switch. During our consecutive 20-year tenure, my colleague, Dr. Lenhardt, and I managed the healthcare services contract without any increase beyond the normal consumer price index. We stand by our proven performance, integrity, and quality of services provided, never engaging in such business practices. While federal law mandates jails and prisons to provide healthcare within a standard of care, this should not be leveraged by any healthcare provider to extort more, more money from local or state governments. Only through an RFP process can outside companies, including ours, be held accountable for pricing and service delivery. It is not merely about the bottom line, but of a proposal, but also about the value proposition and the history of performance. Once again, we respectfully request the opportunity to submit a proposal bid through a transparent RFP process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have somebody signed up, is Chad.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chad. A little nervous, first time I've ever been to a Commissioners' meeting before, but after speaking with Ms. Ward this, this morning, I decided to come out and, and voice a concern. I'd like to start out by reading a scripture here from Proverbs 10:9, says, whoever walks in integrity walks securely, but he who makes his ways crooked will be found out. And I said, what is integrity? The quality of being honest and having strong moral principles. With that being said, this morning, I went online to print off my sample ballot for this upcoming election. The first thing that I noticed is that I am no longer voting in Congressional District 1. I question that. In 2022, I voted in Congressional District 1, and why now am I voting in Congressional District 3? So I called the Pitt County Board of Election and discovered that the General Assembly in 2023 voted to redraw the districts. Now, I'm sure each and every one of our elected representatives that took an oath to the Constitution of the United States as our elected members also took an oath to the Constitution of North Carolina, but did they read it? Concerning districting in North Carolina, North Carolina Constitution states Article 2, Section 5, every 10 years, a census of population has been taken by the Order of Congress. Those districts are drawn in accordance with population. No county shall be divided in the formation of a representative district, and the district shall remain unaltered until the return of decennial census population taken by Order of Congress, which would be 2030. My question is this, why did the General Assembly violate their oath of office that they swore to the Constitution of North Carolina? The districts were redrawn in 2020 after the census was taken, so they should not have been redrawn until 2030. Do these people have integrity? They have honesty? I thank you guys for listening to my concern.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Joe Miller.
I'm Joe Miller, I live on State Mill Road, Bethel's my address, just north of Greenville City Limits. I'm here again to talk about gun ordinance that I think you're discussing tonight. I'd like everybody to move this forward for a vote and put forward a gun ordinance. Some bad actors we've had in the area, we don't have any means to prosecute, charge, have them change their behaviors. And so we need an ordinance. My wife has spent some time going around talking to neighbors. I'd say 80 to 90% of the folks that live in our area are in favor of the gun ordinance as written. Two people are not in favor of it, one of whom says that he came here the last time that this, this was going to be discussed, he said he spoke against it, but he had not read the ordinance. She made him read the ordinance, he says it's written better. It's the same thing. When you go through and read point by point, nobody can really argue with what this ordinance says. They're not in favor of shooting guns on your property, they're not in favor of an ineffective backstop, they're not in favor of shooting at night. So what it means is, they're just scared to sign off. It's, it's, it's time to put this forward. The other neighbor who wouldn't sign, we suspect, and we've heard, she likes shooting her firearm down this nice, long, cleared pathway that the railroad travels on. You know, we, we need some kind of enforcement to make sure that this doesn't happen. They also don't offer any alternative. In the area, I don't know if it's Pitt County or Greenville, we've had a couple people who have wanted to open a gun range. We, as a community, need to get in favor of an indoor gun range, so people have a place to go and do this safely. One other thing, when, when I was in sixth grade, I played the trombone, and I went into my elementary school, and we were going to band practice, and onstage for a second-grade prop was a BB gun, in the school, right on the stage. You know, you would go to jail for that now. Times change. You know, the, the way that we all picture the idea of a BB gun onstage in a school in the modern world is, is really how we ought to be thinking about not having a gun ordinance. I'd appreciate if you moved this forward for a vote and, and vote for the gun ordinance that you, you investigated in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alex Pascal.
My name is Alex Pascal, I live at 4230 Stanfield Court in Aden, and I am currently a candidate running for the North Carolina State Senate, Senate District 5, which is all of Pitt County and all of Edgcombe County. Now, I didn't come here tonight to give you guys a campaign speech or to tell you why I'm necessarily the, the best candidate, I don't think this is necessarily particular, the best form for that, but you should know who I am. I'm an Assistant Public Defender here in Pitt County. I work very closely with the District Attorney's Office, I believe. On tonight's agenda, I've been on the Veterans Treatment Court Committee, they've done phenomenal work, hats off to Ferris Dixon, and even I see Sheriff Dance back there, her team has, has worked really well. And I think here in Pitt County, we actually do a really good job of working across the aisle with one another. As a public defender, I certainly have been engaged in the process here, you know, whenever I go into a courtroom, I don't ask whether, you know, the judge is a Republican or a Democrat, that, that doesn't matter. I can tell you from my personal experience here in Pitt County, partisanship does not affect our criminal justice process, and that's something that I'm very proud of. I look forward to continuing that tradition in the General Assembly, and I look forward to being your next state senator. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Sharon Evans.
The deputy, I believe, if that's the last, if that's the last person signed up, they were trying to get to Board of Education.
Okay, it's not.
Okay.
Reginald Spade is signed up, but did you need to, you, you're good. And then I have Jacob Nichols is the last person signed up to speak. Jacob Nichols?
I believe that's the one that's on the meeting.
And he went up to the school board. Okay, that's all I have signed up to speak.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on to items for report, Madam Manager.
Yes, I have a few items for you this evening. The first one is your next meeting date, it's October 21st and November 4th, in this room, for your regular meetings. Tomorrow morning, we celebrate our employees with milestone service years in five-year increments, and we will celebrate them at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning in this room. All Commissioners are welcome to attend. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read off the names of those we're celebrating tomorrow.
Please.
With five years of service, we're celebrating Jordan Battle in the Detention Center, Christopher Cabbagestock detention, Nicole Cherry in inspections, Jason Jackson in detention, Noshnikah Keel in detention, Elizabeth Kitchrell in detention, Vance Stewart in the Sheriff's Office, Tamika Washington in Social Services, and Willie Williams in Pitt Area Transit System. With 10 years of service, tomorrow, we will celebrate Teyenda Catino, Social Services, Christina Futral, Social Services, Cynthia Gaskins, Tax Administration, Levetta Grady, Social Services, Thomas Lindsay, Management Information Systems, Meredith Lovely, Emergency Management, Jeffrey Massengill, Public Health, and Hunter Nichols, Sheriff's Office. We have 15 years of service, tomorrow morning, we'll celebrate Daniel Hines in the Sheriff's Office, Diana Craiglow in Human Resources, Randall McGowan in detention, Thomas Miller in detention, Julia Petraso in the Sheriff's Office, and Martin Russell in detention. With 20 years, two decades of service, tomorrow morning, we will celebrate Lorinda Mason in Social Services and Beth Woolard in Social Services. With 25 years of experience with Pitt County Government, tomorrow, we'll celebrate Kent Keeter in Public Health, Priscilla Pippins in the Sheriff's Office, and Mary Wilson in detention, and then we will have one 30-year recipient tomorrow morning, Stephen Godley with Public Health. So we look forward to having breakfast for those employees and guests tomorrow morning in this room at 8 o'clock. Also a reminder that you will have your existing industries reception put on by Pitt County Economic Development tomorrow evening from 5:30 to 7 at the Hilton. We will celebrate Large Industry of the Year, Small Industry of the Year, and our Trailblazer Award, like we have in the past, a neat event that takes place during National Manufacturing Week. Also, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce this evening, in your audience, Maria Farr. She is the new President of Pitt Community College. She is the sixth president at Pitt Community College, the first female to serve in that role, and she comes to Pitt Community College after having served seven years at South Piedmont Community College. She is no stranger to Pitt County, having previously served at Pitt Community College as the Assistant Vice President of Academic Affairs from 2011 to 2014. So I look forward to continuing to develop and maintain the strong partnership that we have with Pitt Community College. On your consent agenda this evening, as approved during your budget process, we're allocating, upon approval of the consent agenda, 1.4 million for interior door locks, and Maria's perspective and forward-thinking, I'm super excited about how it's going to take Pitt Community College and our partnership to the next level.
Can we have her come up to the?
Absolutely, Maria.
Just so we can see her.
Thank you.
Seeing her, but.
Thank you so much. I'm really honored to be here tonight. Even from the moment that I stepped into this role, I felt a very warm welcome, so I thank you County Manager Gallagher, and of course Chairman Smith, who has already come to our board meeting, I've had one since I've been here, it's only been a month and a half, but thank you to all the Commissioners. Greenville is a very special place, Pitt County is a very special place, Winterville is a very special place. I say that because Pitt, Pitt Community College does exist in the town of Winterville, and I know Mayor Hines was sitting back here. But I, I just wanted you to know that together in partnership, there is so much that we can do for our community, and I want to thank you for the support you have given Pitt Community College. We are in the process of building a welding building, which with almost 100 booths, can put so many people to work in good-paying jobs for our local employers. So I cannot thank you enough for the support that you have given. I look very, I very much look forward to getting to know you all and engaging with you further. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farr. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Also, two new county employees, one who has not started yet, but will start next Monday, October 15th, is Tiffany Peterson. She comes to us from Wake County Animal Services and will serve as Pitt County's new Animal Services Director. She's previously served as Director of Animal Service Agencies in a county in the state of Michigan, has a true compassion for animals, and has law enforcement experience as well. She served as a police officer and a deputy sheriff in the state of Michigan, and I think we'll bring together her enforcement experience with her compassion for animals and make a tremendous difference in strengthening community partnerships at Pitt County Animal Services. So you will meet her when she is on board, and her first day is next Monday. And then if Noel Smith is in the audience, is Noel still here? Okay, if Noel will stand up, okay, and give a wave. Noel Smith, if you haven't met her yet, you need to meet her. She has recently joined us as the new manager for the Pitt County Farmer's Market. We are so thrilled to have Noel on board. She joins us from the private sector, having had experience as an operations manager, head of a nutrition services department, and has previous work experience with nutrition coaching in our community as well. She has her Bachelor of Arts from East Carolina University, she's pursuing a Master of Science in Human Nutrition from the University of Bridgeport in Connecticut, and she has nutrition certifications from the International Sports Science and Precision Nutrition Associations. And if you spend any amount of time talking with Noel, I have no doubt you will be very impressed as soon as you get her talking about food as medicine, and how fresh fruits and vegetables and produce in our community and access to them can be transformational for our quality of life. So we are thrilled to have Noel on board. The next item I have for you is, just to make you aware, if you haven't seen it when you turned in this evening, is a new safety project by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. It's not one that we have any say or involvement in, but it impacts our access to this building. So on NC 11 Memorial Drive from the McDonald's, where it hits Stansburg Road down to Fifth Street, will now have a solid median the entire way down, and that's for safety purposes. That construction started in the beginning of October, October 1 should be completed, I believe, before the end of this month, which will prohibit left turns from Memorial into Sixth Street to access the county office building, and it will prohibit left turns from Sixth Street out onto Memorial. That was the result of a study that had over 100 accidents between Stansburg Road and Fifth Street, over 50 of those accidents happened at the Sixth Street intersection. And so as a result, you will see a solid median, and will have to alter your travel route so that you either come all the way down to Fifth Street, turn left, and then left into the building at the designated cut-through, or you can continue straight on Stansburg Road and come in through Moy, unless you know a trickier way through the fast-food restaurants and banks. and banks on that side of Stansburg Road. But just wanted to make you all aware of that safety improvement. And then finally, I have item G is Veteran Treatment, Veterans Treatment Court. We have some distinguished folks in the audience with us this evening. If you'll stand up if you're here for Veterans Treatment Court. Got District Attorney Ferris Dixon, Public Defender's Office Alex Pascal, Jim Hooker, veteran, and MJ, MJ, yes, from the District Attorney's Office there as well, as long as other partners, including friends from the Sheriff's Office and others. So thank you. And this is to report to you that you'll remember this group came forward and asked for permission to apply for a grant that would implement Veterans Treatment Court in our community. They applied for that grant with our assistance in the name of the county, and last week we were awarded that grant. We have 45 days to accept that award, so it'll come back to your meeting on October 21st with the full grant agreement available to you to authorize me to sign off accepting that grant award. And as a reminder, this is $900,000 for a four-year period. We have 45 days to accept it, so we'll bring that back October 21st to accept it, and you may also recall that as part of this grant, it has a Veterans Treatment Court Coordinator, which would be a position employed by Pitt County and adding to its head count, and a part-time peer mentor. So on October 21st, we'll bring back all of the details, but didn't want to wait to give you this good news. Yes, and we'll ask to accept it and add to the head count at that time. There is no match associated with this grant, so it's $900,000 that will fully fund all costs of this program for the next four years. And I think your elected district attorney would like to say something.
Just briefly, Madam Service, Madam Clerk, Sheriff Beth Rhodes could not be here. She's still at courthouse working. She wanted to be here, but wanted to make sure she finished that before she left.
Great. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Madam Manager. We'll move on to a here a motion for items for consent. Remember, we move forward in six to discussion. Got a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, we'll move on to items for discussion. Madam Manager, you got the first one.
Yes, do we want to start with four and six?
Sure, that may be a little shorter. Let's go four and six, and then we'll go back to one and two. So coming off four will be budget amendment for Journey Home Grant.
Okay, so the Journey Home Grant was put on your items for consent. You may recall that several months ago, the city of Greenville reached out to the county to ask how they could contribute their home grant funds to the county's housing and homelessness efforts. Under the leadership of Jonas Hill, Lynn James and her team do an incredible job serving housing and homelessness in the county, which is a function that's traditionally held by municipalities, as housing and homelessness issues are traditionally served within the urban core. But to fill gaps within the community, the Pitt County Planning Department has been significantly involved in implementing several effective programs with regard to housing and homelessness, including housing replacement, housing repair, and in this instance with regard to these funds, working with community partners in order to transition people who are homeless or in crisis to permanent housing. The city of Greenville has offered us $21,575 of their home funds to contribute to our efforts, and they have designated in their inter-local agreement that these funds be used for temporary hotel stays during that transition. Happy to answer any questions, and have Jonas here as well.
Okay. I don't have, I don't, thank you. I don't have any question, but I just want to raise a question, I mean, an issue, an awareness of the use of these funds. It's a Band-Aid sort of thing to pay for a hotel room for a homeless person for one night or two nights, you know, that's not, it's not sustainable. And, you know, I think we would do better looking at other ways of trying to find other main ways to help the person find permanent housing. So I don't know that anything we can do, but I just want to say that, because I get, I get calls at my church for assistance with paying hotel bills, and, you know, we can only pay, you know, give a small amount, you know, one night. So, but, you know, the person is still homeless. So it's a real concern, man. I just want to voice that.
Absolutely, and if I could, to your point, a lot of these funds are used, or I'd say all of the funds are used, when working with the homeless population that may be in the shelter. The shelter has a time limit on how long someone could stay. So we use these funds when they may be timing out at the shelter, but we have been working with those clients and placing them in permanent housing. So these are kind of gap funds that allow us to transition them from the shelter when they time out into that permanent housing that we've been working with the clients on.
Those I've talked to are not.
Okay. I'm not saying we work with all of them. I agree there is a need in the community, but that's what these funds are intended to do.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Coulson, then come back to Commissioner McGlone.
So you wait to talk times out. Why don't you do it ahead of time? Why don't you do it before that? If this is so necessary, why don't you do it before that?
Well, I think to Ms. Huggins's point, we have a crisis here and across the country in affordable housing. Our housing inventory, especially rental housing here in Pitt County, is at capacity. We have trouble, a lot of times these individuals have criminal background histories, they have credit issues, so we're trying to work through in finding permanent housing, someone who will rent to these people with bad credit, with the criminal history possibly, and putting them in permanent housing. So it's a struggle. It takes a lot of effort from staff in identifying landlords who are willing to take these individuals on.
Well, I agree with, I agree with Ann. Paying for hotel rooms is a Band-Aid. It's a waste of the taxpayers' money, in my opinion. And again, it's not just us, but if you multiply it by the 3,200 counties across the country, I'll bet you it's a big number.
Commissioner McGlone?
Yeah, I kind of disagree with that. I think it's a needed process that we're doing it out, and I think we should have more funds for this. But I want to ask you, what is the application process in terms of meaning this?
So once someone is determined to be homeless, we bring them in, we ask them a series of questions about their living conditions, where they're staying. If they're in the shelter, then that qualifies them as homeless. Then we do a budgeting session with them where we look at their finances, we look at their credit history and criminal background and all of that, and then we try to work with them in identifying where they want to work or where they want to live. Also, we work with them to acquire jobs. So we're looking for them to get employment, some source of income, to make themselves sustainable once we get them into those houses. We, we work very closely with religious groups, churches in the community, as well as employers and landlords in that process.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other commissioner questions? Thank you, Jonas. What a pleasure to board.
We accept it.
Most appropriate.
Got a motion to approve here, a second?
A second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, we'll move on, Madam Manager, to item six.
Item six is approval of a contract between the Pitt County Department of Social Services and ENC Protection Group. This contract exceeds my contract signing authority, and this provides a deputy, and I'm sorry, this provides a security officer at the Human Services Building and the Department of Social Services, Social Services Building here in the county office building during the work week. Given the, some instances that have occurred in the past, there is a need determined by the Social Services Director to have security presence in both buildings. We used to have a Sheriff's Office position within the Manager's Office that patrolled this building and other county buildings. That was pulled from the Sheriff's Office. We then contracted with off-duty Sheriff's Officers through the Contract Program, and then that was pulled. We weren't permitted to contract for meetings and such. And so we have, the county has contracted with ENC Protection Group for your board meeting security, and we contract with Allied Universal for security at the courthouse, and this is now Ms. Rochelle's request to contract with ENC Protection Group for her two deputies. The reason, one of the reasons that she has selected ENC Protection Group after considering other vendors is because they were the only group that would also provide assistance in transporting at-risk juveniles. And there is a transportation component for the Department of Social Services in that contract. What I'd like to do, the Allied Universal contracted, the courthouse expires June 30th of 2025, our contract, this contract would run through June 30th of 2025, and we have a contract through the end of the fiscal year with ENC Protection Group. I think there is a possibility that we may be able to have more competitive pricing, maybe if, if there was one vendor or less than three vendors, and so my intent would be next year to issue an RFP for security services in those locations. There's due for an RFP at the courthouse anyway, and Ms. Rochelle and I have spent a good bit of time talking about whether or not we could save money. ENC Protection Group was the lowest cost for the Department of Social Services and the only provider that would assist with transportation, and so we added this on for approval of that contract, and Ms. Rochelle and her business officer are present if there are any other questions.
Commissioner Huggins?
I didn't have it, I just wanted to, wanted the kind of manager to explain it.
Okay. Any questions for Madam Manager or for the assessment?
Move to approve. Isn't the Juvenile Center at limit?
The Juvenile Detention Center? I'd have to find that out for you. I don't have that information.
I heard it in the community that it's at limit, and so what happens when we don't have spacing for them at the juvenile center?
Well, most of the people in the care and custody of the Department of Social Services are placed in non-criminal, in civil settings, in foster homes or in group homes or in other therapeutic facilities. There may be a small handful, and I'll look to Ms. Rochelle, that also happen to be involved with the juvenile justice system and times when there has to be collaboration if the court system requires a placement in the juvenile detention center. But for most of the juveniles within the care and custody of the Department of Social Services, they would be in a foster home outside of the detentions, outside of juvenile detention.
I was curious, because there are other state-owned properties about that maybe we could consider looking at it, but I did hear that it was at limit.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Huggins to approve item six. I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, we'll move on to recreational shooting ordinance. Madam Manager, want to give us an update there?
Yes, I can introduce this topic, which has been added for discussion based on your last meeting where you asked us to bring it back. Included in your agenda materials are excerpts from prior meeting minutes where this was discussed, samples from other counties, a dated memo from 2020. The law has changed somewhat, the law has changed with regard to ordinances with criminal penalties since that time, a survey, and then a proposed ordinance for Pitt County that was the result of the work of a firearms committee back in 2020 and 2021. No action was taken by this board at that time because of objection from the community. Then it's being brought back to this board for discussion this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
And just for clarification, we cannot vote on this. We've got to have a public hearing before we can vote on it, is that correct?
So in speaking with, in your prior materials, the county manager at the time and the board at that time recommended that a public hearing be held because of the controversial nature of the topic, and because we had traditionally held public hearings. In conversation with the county attorney, there is not a technical legal requirement that a public hearing be held for this. However, it would still need two readings to pass, and correct me if I say anything wrong, because it would impose criminal penalties. So typically, whenever you pass an ordinance, if it's not unanimous, you have to bring it back for a second reading, unless there's an exception like your budget ordinance. In this case, even if it were unanimous, if we're to include criminal penalties within it, you would have to bring it back for a second reading. So it isn't something that could be started and finished this evening, and as manager, given the nature of this topic, although it's not required by law, I would recommend that the board hold a public hearing before adopting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Manager, for outlining, and I'm glad to, for the board again, did want, as we opened the discussion, I'm not sure if we did this in our previous iteration, but I think it would be good to ask Pitt County Schools, resource officers in and around schools, whether or not the 300 feet that's in the current ordinance is sufficient to, I guess, filter out perceived threats in and around campuses. I liked, I liked, I would just go on the record saying that I, I was in support of ordinance then when, when we, when it was presented, and I still think that it's a good, well-written, well-reasoned ordinance, and I think it's something that we should bring back for hearing and look to consider this, this calendar year if possible.
Further discussion? Comments?
Are we talking about in the present form that is in there, or do you want to add more than 300 feet?
Well, I, I would just like, so when, so when we did this process, what I liked is that we asked the experts, informed a committee to come up with recommendations. That's why I think it's a really well-reasoned ordinance, and I, and I just think that it would be good to ask Pitt County Schools whether or not, so, so I work in a school, and recently there was a shooting nearby that school that necessitated, necessitated a lockdown, right? And, and I know this is something that's on the minds of all school resource officers, administrators. I would just like to ask the question to Pitt County Schools whether or not the, the buffer that we've got built into the current one is one, or if they recommend, if there, maybe there is a trend nationally that's a better one, or if this one may be sufficient for law enforcement. Again, not, I don't want to issue my opinion on it, and I think it's important to ask law enforcement and the people that are in charge of that, whether or not this is, this is correct, and just to get feedback. If it needs to be informed, great. If it doesn't, as it sits, you know, it's fine as well. Just the more, more input from people that are actually on the ground that have to respond to these threats, I think the better.
Okay. Commissioner McGlone?
I think one of the main concerns that I've been getting from the citizens of Pitt County is the recreational discharge of firearms, and I think that that's, that's important because we heard something tonight, I think, was addressed to that concern. Certainly, I, I, I think that we need to do something about it, and we need to do something about it. This is a critical matter, and it's a dangerous matter in terms of just shooting firearms at will. As a firearm instructor, I understand the nature of that. So I think we need to really be serious about this and address these concerns for the public safety. That's my concern. Thank you, Ms. Rochelle.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner?
It really concerns me when there is a neighborhood that's heavy populated and all the areas are filled, and people are having to move in order to avoid confrontations. We are already short of housing, so, and it's hard to tell how far 300 feet is unless you're used to dealing with 300 feet. And at the last meeting, the resident talked about the person shooting in his neighborhood, and the projectiles ended up on his property. It bothers me that there's nothing can be done until there is a It bothers me that there's nothing can be done until there is a crime committed or someone gets shot or something like that. And it really bothers me that someone have to be hurt before there is a, a no shooting in a neighborhood. I really, bullets doesn't have eyes. And it's very concerning to me. So I don't know, and I did read this, and I did read all of this in the discussions by the committee. But I'm curious as to those on the committee, if they really know how close 300 feet is. And when we went in this neighborhood, there was a church not that far. And from what residents are owning nowadays, the, it doesn't take much for the bullet to travel. So in our reconsider, reconciliation of this, we should look into that as well.
Madam Manager, you got a reply to the?
Just briefly, two things. One is to say that 300 feet came from the hunting regulations. So it was just pulled, and it can be any distance that this board would like it to be. So it can be greater if that's what the board chooses. It can be greater around a school and less around others. But the committee, when they considered this, pulled the 300 feet because that was consistent with regulations in the state hunting ordinance. The second thing I would say is if the board directs us to bring this back, we can bring back information on the distance from the schools if we ask them. But I would also ask for some leeway for a current review from the county attorney since the ordinance was prepared in 2020, to be sure that it comports with current regulations with regard to the offenses and to see if there are small things that would make the ordinance stronger, such as potentially a definition of a term within it or something like that.
If you notice in that neighborhood where that complaint was, there was also a house of worship right behind that subdivision. Now, maybe not where the shooting was occurring at that time, but the vicinity of it can cause some concern. And I did get a comment from one of the ministers who shared with me that there was a concerning person who entered their sanctuary one night, and they all was concerned about his entrance. This happened recently, maybe within the last couple of weeks. So all I could say was call 911 when you are in service and you feel unsafe. But I hate to see the fact that we don't have anything to address that.
Okay, Commissioner Coles?
So with all the discussion, I'm a little confused. What's the timeline for this? Would the public hearing be the next meeting? Or is it going to be two meetings from now? Can we do things concurrent with, if we're going to look at something that, asking the school system about the distance and so on, could they not be done at the same time? Historically, we have a, a process, it seems, where we do one thing, and we wait until we get to the end of it, then we do the next thing. We'll never build a road that way, so.
We can set whatever timeline the board desires. It could be done as quick.
Would public hearing be the next meeting?
It could be done as quickly. We have to give 10 days' notice of a public hearing. Your next meeting is October 21st, so there's time to do that. We could reach out to the school district this week and ask them about that. The county attorney can do his review on the language, and we can bring you back a proposed ordinance and provide legal notice and have a public hearing on October 21st. Following the public hearing, you could have your first reading if you are satisfied with it. After hearing that, you could motion that evening to approve it. And then if there are criminal penalties within it, then you could come back your first meeting in November for the second reading, and then it would be effective.
May I ask a question?
Would be the fastest timeline that I could anticipate.
I didn't see anything in here relating to those, the type of weapon. The, these are big guns we're talking about, AR-15s and stuff like that.
So this ordinance talks about any gun that shoots?
That was a concern of the residents, that they had shooting big guns.
I have one, one final concern, and this to, to make. Are there any area within this geographical area outside of Greenville, Pitt County, that has such an ordinance, ordinance involving this type of recreational shooting that you know of?
So I don't know if there's other municipalities that would have. It would be your municipalities that would have some sort of ordinance or code for complaints for that. I don't know if Bepal has it, or Farble has it, or any other municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
But I can bring that back, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
So if there's no further discussion or comments, then let's provide some clear direction on what we would like Madam Manager and her staff to bring back. Do we need that, you need that in a motion?
Let me help.
I would like to see us cover it all at one time. That would be my motion.
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we start off at least with, with the public hearing being done in the next meeting.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second that we will put on the, the next board meeting on the agenda of the public hearing. Do you need anything more than that?
Nope. And I'll, with consensus of the board, consult with the Board of Education and bring back a final ordinance for you to view prior to that public hearing.
All the ancillary activities just follow naturally.
All of that that you said before, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second?
Did it already?
Oh, I thought we already voted on it.
Okay, I didn't vote, but if you say so.
We just voted.
I saw it, but I never pressed my button.
Want to do it again?
We might need to do it again. I, I saw where it had all the votes on there. Okay, now we're good to go. Okay, we will move on to the last item for discussion, the update and status on inmate medical contract. Do you want to update before I, or say anything before I call Sheriff Dance?
No, other, other than to say this item was brought back at your last meeting at the request of the board for an update on the status of the RFP and inmate medical contract.
Are we going to have Sheriff Dance come up?
Yes.
Okay, Sheriff Dance?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman of the board, Ms. Gallagher, county manager, and the board members. We're back here tonight to discuss the item for discussion and an update status on the jail medical contract. So the sheriff's office in Well Path has current jail, as the jail current medical provider, has reached an agreement regarding the existing contract. This discussion will update the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, the county staff, and also the public on the sheriff's office plan for the detention center inmate medical service contract. That item is up for discussion. I've had a chance to listen to, I believe, information from the last board meeting in reference to some of the rebuttals that I heard from the previous medical provider, which was Dr. Servie. And I just want to talk about some of those bullet points that I took to heart, and I just kind of want to point out. And I just want to bring some clarity to it because the day-to-day operation is real. And it's not about favoring any provider over another. It's about the quality of care that we get for the inmates at our detention center and your detention center and the citizen detention center. So on the first one, I believe the statement goes, there's not a nurse practitioner on site for sick call and uses telehealth services. There's a reality about telehealth services that I want to talk about because that is the way of the country as we speak. A lot of services are short because those particular professionals are not available sometimes during emergency and crises and things of that nature to actually provide the onsite service. So telehealth is probably one of the greatest inventions in the United States right now to help with that. But anyway, a full-time nurse practitioner has been hired and started on October the 7th, I believe that's today. There was also another nurse practitioner that was hired in September, but later did not accept the position. And when there was not a nurse practitioner on site, we did use the telehealth services. But in conjunction with using that telehealth services, it was a qualified nurse practitioner on the back end. And the medical services that we had in the facility with the nurses to where we were actually able to still continue on with providing that same quality care, nevertheless, we want the face-to-face with the inmate always. But there's a reality that we have to face at the current time. And that is, from time to time, you will have staffing deficiencies or staffing callouts and such things as that. But nevertheless, the medical director that we've hired also assisted in that matter as well. And the medical director was actually hired on August the 12th of 2024. And I'll move on to number two. And it states that the current provider sends detainees to the hospital for minor things such as stitches. The provider has advised that in their hiring of the onsite medical director and the onsite nurse practitioner, they were able to do small things such as treatments on the insides to the facility, such as stitches. Well, did a little research on that, and I know that in the past 24 months or so, there have been very few stitches-related issues that we've had at the entire facility. And as a matter of fact, over the past 12 months, there were only two inmates that required stitches in the facilities. I just want to state that because when I hear the information, and I did listen to the previous meeting, and I take it personal, but to hear things such as that, knowing that it is just far-fetched, it just bothers me personally with the sacrifices that I make every day. And I don't know about you all, but my sacrifices have been real to Pitt County. But let's just move on. The current provider does not provide 24/7 medical and psychiatric needs. This is incorrect. The medical provider provides 24/7 services. The psychiatric, or the psychiatrist is available for mental health services, either face-to-face or also via telehealth, and also during the on-call. As a matter of fact, the psychiatric services that we have is very much in love with the work that is being done on the day-to-day so much that the individual gave up the opportunity to live in the western part of the state to move here because she loved it just that much. Let's move on to number four. No onsite medical director since the contract was started. A full-time medical director was hired on August 12th. She is onsite 16 hours a week, and the county has been refunding all any money on unfilled medical director position up to present date. The services are still being overseen, even then, the services were still being seen by a provider, which was a physician assistant. This was during the times when we didn't have the 16-hour position filled by the medical director. And I don't know if you all know, it is a rather bit of a challenge to fulfill a 16-hour FTE for a medical director position. But nevertheless, we did make it possible in August. The next one. A week went past and no sick calls were done, just to answer that for you. There was an issue with the medical, where the sick calls were actually misplaced, which resulted in a backup on the sick call. And once the sick call list was actually found, the sick call list went back to normal operation and normal schedule. Mysteriously, the sick calls that were located with a less-than-favorable employee with the current provider, who happens to be a really close friend of the previous medical provider. I just want that to resonate with you for a minute, that sometimes there are employees that would carry on from one entity to the next that have a sense of loyalty, not necessarily for the best interest of county government, but for the best interest of self. Just be leery of that. The next one. No dentist availability. 14 detainees were actually seen on 9/21 of this year. The dentist is now back on track. The issue we have with the dentist, just to keep it plain and simple with you, we have a lot of ECU student dentists, dentistry members that come to the facility and do the dental work, and even the previous medical provider used those same sources. And even more now than ever before, we're turning out more and more dentists here at the university because of our dental school that we have here. But nevertheless, with the modern generation of dentistry, the x-ray machine was out of compliance, and nevertheless, the, the NACLAD Department of Health and Human Services had not inspected the x-ray machine at the time, obviously throwing a tailwind in the schedule for the dentistry inmates to be seen. But nevertheless, we did take care of 14 of those individuals on the 21st, and we have another set of those individuals that are set to be done in the latter parts of this month. Well, nevertheless, dental is bi-weekly, and those individuals that even needed any type of dentistry work that was urgent was taken care of through off-site provider. The next one. Spoke about a significant increase in the current provider cost. And you know, the sheriff and I, we talked about it. We knew that the 22% was a complete deal breaker. But nevertheless, it doesn't change the fact. You all got the package. It doesn't change the fact that the information that they provided was information about what their cost was associated with some of those concerns that they had, whether it be employee costs or legality costs or just cost of having to pay more to recruit nurses to come into detention because it is not every day that nurses go to school and get degrees to want to work in a detention center. So nevertheless, what are you going to be doing different, no matter if the previous medical provider come back tomorrow or whether or not you go with somebody brand new? The first thing that's going to happen is they're going to reach out to the same FTEs that are currently on site and ask them, can I potentially look at these particular individuals to see if they want to fulfill a working contract with my company? So be mindful that as we dabble back and forth with what we have going on with this contract. And again, I take it personal because I know what I've seen in the past couple of weeks, but I know what I've seen in the past couple of years. I know what I've seen in the last decade. Let's not be fooled by that. And I know Sheriff gave me the privilege to come up here and speak, and I appreciate that because I don't shy away from anything that we have going on at the facility. I just believe in transparency and how we operate at the facility. And I respect the previous medical providers greatly, but I'm a business-minded person. So let's just be real about it. We have electronic medical records at the facility. We didn't have that before. And this is not stripped by the sheriff. This is me talking. You're asking, and they're asking, because I sit here tonight and I heard the information, and they're asking for a chance to come back and provide a quality service that we've been receiving, by the way. And let me tell you something. I know that Doc spoke about the information as it relates to how were we able to come into an agreement with such a number that is significant because of the 20%, 22% that they were asking. And we have made an agreement as of, recently as of today finalized with a letter from the current provider, all the way back to the original 5% on the CPI that is agreed upon in the original contract. And yes, we are in the last year of our contract, and there's eight months left in that contract. But nevertheless, around $3.4 million is the new opportunity that we have on services that I'm still satisfied with. And we work with the medical team day in and day out, and they have fulfilled key positions at the facility. People come and go all the time, and let's not be naive and think that they don't. We have a new nurse practitioner. We have a new medical director, and we all been harping about that. And we have too because we wanted it as well. But nevertheless, every dime we rolled, we got it back. And nevertheless, those inmates were still being cared for. And I keep hearing about deaths in the facility. And I heard it again when I listened to the board meeting last week. I have issues with that because we have no deficiencies in our I have issues with that because we have no deficiencies in our facility, right? Yeah, we can throw around terms about death, but the reality is, did we do anything wrong at the facility? Did the medical provider do anything wrong at the facility? And guess what? The doctors that are here tonight had deaths too. I know because I was there, and that was never a problem. But why is it such a huge concern? And I do understand as commissioners, and you're responsible for the county and every person in this county, but nevertheless, we do our job very thoroughly. And let me explain something to you. The reason for why our current provider loves doing business with us is because it's not just about money. It's about the integrity of who we are as an agency in the sheriff's office and the quality of work that we provide in the detention center, not just the routine care for our inmates, but the programs that we have in the facility. Those particular programs is something that we haven't had before, and the quality of services that we're providing, it gives them pause to want to be in a relationship with us even at the sacrifice of the $300,000, $400,000 that they had to eat in order to make this happen. Let's not be fooled by that information that I'm sharing. And I know you have questions for me, but I'd be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Is an RFP going to be?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is an RFP going to be issued?
Not at the present, sir. We are satisfied with the $3.4 million contract. They are providing the quality service that we were looking for. We're in the last year of that contract, and it has worked out for us.
I'm sorry, but you need to be doing the RFP, period.
I hear you, sir.
Do you?
Absolutely.
Any other commissioner comments, questions?
So, yeah.
Can I may address that, the RFP, just as a reminder? There are two services that are provided inside of the detention center that does not necessarily require an RFP be done. One is the medical, and the other, I believe, is the food services. That does not have to be RFPed. Our medical contract that we had prior to me coming into office, I don't ever recall being RFPed during the 20-plus years they were here. Now, I may be wrong on that, but I know that when I came in, the current medical contract was not RFPed. It was a continuation. So the only reason that we did an RFP or requested of the board to prepare for an RFP was because our current medical contract asked for 22%, and I wasn't giving them 22%. And I needed to be prepared in case the negotiations did not work out to be able to RFP it. It was a bargaining tool. We have now, we are now in a contract with our current provider that continues status quo from the beginning of when it started. There is no increase. We budgeted it for the 5%. We would be breaking a contract if we were to remove from that.
That is not the reason, Sheriff Dance. The fact is, is that they were trying to break the contract when they asked for the 22% because it's supposed to go for another eight months.
They did not break the contract.
And what's going to happen at the end of that eight months?
At the end of that eight months, I will consider RFP in it. At the end of the contract, we budgeted it for the 5%. You all passed it. You voted on it. You passed it. The money's there. Nothing's changed. There is nothing that has changed.
Other than the trust of WellPath. Trust, WellPath, when they came forward and asked for that money and for you to say that they've lost $300,000, $400,000, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm standing here before you today to say it's not happening.
I'm a business person too, and when I enter into a contract, I have to honor it. I mean, we got a $10 million contract with General Motors. Try breaking a contract with them sometime. Try going back to asking for their 22%, see what they say. Anyway, the point is, is that their trust and integrity, at least with me, I'm only one of nine, isn't there. And I feel like it was crammed down our throat initially. I don't believe it was a fair deal. Sheriff Dance, you and I talked on the phone at a very long period of time, and you had me won over. You did, until I found out that what you told me a meeting or two meetings later, it wasn't true. I felt betrayed.
Mr. Colson, what we talked about was electronic medical records.
That's exactly, that's exactly right.
Ask this company, ask the previous company, did they have electronic medical records? They did not.
They said that they would do it.
So don't accuse me of telling you something that was untrue.
They said that they would do it.
Let's hear one another out respectfully.
The previous company said that the previous company did not have electronic medical records.
They did not.
The previous company was asked about getting electronic medical records. The previous company said, oh, we would look at that. But let me tell you something. I was the third-in-command under the other sheriff, and he also asked that they get electronic medical records, and the cam was kicked down the road. So historically, I already knew it was going to be kicked again, and I made an executive decision to update and bring us into the 21st century of quality medical care that not only had electronic medical records, but also focused on mental health issues inside of the detention center. RFPed at that time, we changed the medical plan, we did the RFP based on the medical plan, and WellPath was the chosen company. And that's where we're at today. The money has been budgeted.
Okay, Commissioner?
Just to be clear, I don't think we need to relitigate anything with former provider or current provider. I guess what I would like a little clarity on is we set down a process of going through an RFP, and I thought the argument was well-reasoned. We do it to help, help let the market shake out how we're going to get the best bang for our buck for jail medical, and that was not my argument, that was your argument, Chief. And I don't feel like that is a bad way. In fact, I still am sold that that is the best way to move forward with the provision of any contracted services that involve taxpayer funds at the county. So I guess I don't want to get involved in whatever fight is with the former and the current, but I still don't see why having an RFP at some point is not a, not a bad thing if we're looking at trying to force our vendors to play fair with us rather than holding us over the barrel, which, which in fairness was kind of happening. And I think you played the hand you had to, right? I mean, and I'm glad to hear that they've come to the table, but what would be wrong with, with saying that at the end of the eight months, there's going to be an RFP to help lay the groundwork for, let's bargain the right way?
Mr. Dunne, I see that you keep looking at Chief Kate Hart, but I am the sheriff, and absolutely, if you're directing that to me as a decision-maker, I have no problem RFP-ing it at the end of the contract. We're saying the same thing here. 2025, in eight months, that contract will be up, and I have absolutely no problems RFP-ing it. I was only stating before, it is a service contract that does not have to be RFPed.
So the problem that I have with that is that it's too late to wait that long because we're in a position that we were last time, where we're having to be, we're having to make a decision to, eight months is not a long time.
You do understand that the process starts months before when we are in the budgetary season, and it would be before the contract actually ends. It would be three to four months prior when the RFP goes out. I can't tell you the dates when we start the budget process, but it would be prior to the very end of the contract. That's when it's done. So you're prepared to make a decision when we do our budget to be able to say this is what the contract's going to cost.
Well, it felt like last time, when Chief Kate Hart came to us last time and asked for the RFP, it was like deadlines here, we got to get it done.
That's because we were in, we were in the middle of a contract, we were in the middle with this contract. We were being prepared in case they asked for 22%. We weren't giving them 22%. So we said, let's be prepared in case we can't negotiate this, let's be prepared. It would be 90 days before they could leave if they were not coming to the table as, with an agreement on the negotiations. So we were, just came to the board, asked the board, hey, we want to do RFP. We asked you all for permission to let us do an RFP, not you guys telling, asking me or making the decision to do a RFP. And when we, we came here in preparation so that if the contract or the negotiations did not pan out, they would have to give us 90 days per the current contract before they could leave our facility or they would be in breach of contract. Within that 90 days, since we were already come before you all and we were prepared to be able to do a RFP, we would have had, we already had the RFP ready, we would have sent it out, and we would have been prepared within that 90-day period to bring in another medical company of our choosing.
Well, I just make the suggestion that I don't think it would necessarily be a bad thing if the contract's up in eight months to go ahead and start that process and go ahead and toll it. That's just my opinion as a board member, and I'll just respectfully level it.
I think we're saying the same thing, sir. It happens before, anyway. It happens prior to. We're not going to get to the very end of the contract and then do a RFP. That would absolutely be too late. This is a process that starts before.
Okay. Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm hearing a lot tonight, and I'm certain concerned about it. Now, I believe in statutes, what does statute say? What does the statute say? Now, are we required, Sheriff, and the county attorney, are we required to have an RFP concerning the jail facilities in terms of medical, are we required to your knowledge?
I can only answer for, for the sheriff, the statute that retains to me. There are two, well, there are, service contracts do not by statute have to be RFPed. By statute, they do not, and medical is one, and I believe the food service may be the other one. And I would have to look at my business manager to make sure that the food service is the second one. That does not have to be RFPed. It is typically in other counties, the sheriff who chooses the medical contract or the services from a medical that they seem deemed fit to be in the detention center based off the needs of their inmates. And, and, you know, just a couple of other statutes that I'd like to remind you all of is that North Carolina General Statute 162-22 says that the sheriff is the sole keeper of the detention center or of the jail. North Carolina General Statute 153A-225 says that the county has an obligation to pay for inmate medical health care. And 225 and 225.1, this is the most important one, that is a general statute. 153A-225.2, the custodian of the jail, the keeper of the jail, can send all inmates requiring care to anyone that the custodian deems fit. I know, Chief, Kate Hart know, every one of these detention officers who are in management roles know what the needs are of people in our detention center. The people in our detention center are poor with mental health issues because well-to-do people can afford to be out of the jail. So we're going to find inmates that has a lot of mental health issues and are some of the sickest people in the county. These are people who can't manage their own lives, let alone their medical care. So it's important that we have true medical services that not only attends to the physical but the mental because they run hand-in-hand with people who are sitting in my jail. But anyway, those were statutes, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, ultimately, who's in charge of having to decide what medical service that the sheriff department have to have? Who's responsibility is that? Is that the county commissioner's responsibility to decide what medical services go to you involving the sheriff's department? Or do you decide that? I thought, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, I thought that we were the funding source of the medical services for the county. I thought the decision was, was, was made by the sheriff department to whom she want, and we were the funding. Now, my thought process, I may be wrong, that's all I'm asking. My thought process is if she makes the wrong decision, detriment, the inmates causing problem, causing death, causing liabilities to the point that it's uncontrollable, then the county commissioners would take some kind of steps to correct that. But if she's doing the job that she's supposed to be doing in terms of maintaining the health and well-being of the inmate, then she makes that decision, and we support that decision through funding. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's what, that was my process.
I believe your argument is that if she's doing a job, the board of commissioners doesn't want to step in. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think the sheriff, Madam Sheriff, spoke to it in the statute that the cost, the medical cost is borne by the local government. So essentially, you decided. On top of that, I believe Sheriff, Madam Sheriff pointed to this, that the contract is with the local governmental unit, right? It's not with the sheriff's department. Sheriff's department can't contract for the medical services. On top of that, the local unit is, has to approve the jail health plan. So tying that all together, my, again, being on the spot and not having time to research it at this point, my interpretation of it is the board of commissioners, the local government, is one responsible for the medical care, medical cost essentially that's being provided at the jail.
In a nutshell, on my perspective, Mr. McGlaughlin, county commissioners hold the purse strings. You pay for it. The sheriff holds the access to my detention center. If I, as I said, the jail custodian can send all inmates requiring care to anyone that I as the custodian deem fit, if the board, and this is just a hypothetical, hypothetical, if the board decided, say, they want to go with the previous contract, the sheriff decides whether the previous contract is given access to that jail, period. And the sheriff can call a rescue squad every time a person gets sick because we have to provide medical. because we have to provide medical care, and the bill comes to the county. So in essence, you all hold the money. I hold the access.
Mr. Coulson.
I consider that a threat. What you're saying, you want...
Sir, that is exactly just the way it is. I can't change that.
Let's listen to one another, please.
Pardon?
I said, let's listen to one another. Commissioner Coulson, you have the floor.
You want carte blanche to say what you can and can't do. And that's not working together with the local government.
I just gave you carte blanche to what the general statute says in a nutshell. That's what the general statute says.
And they were written for a purpose.
And if you don't like the way it was written, then maybe you should get legislators who change it to give you all the authority. I'm just telling you right now, you don't have it for access. None of you have stepped foot in my jail. You don't even know what the needs are.
So we say we're willing to pay a million dollars a year. But in reality, it really needs to be four. I mean, we would never do that. This board would never do that. We'd never threaten your organization and the care of the inmates by holding that over them. But what you're saying is that, oh, if I don't want somebody, I'll just call the rescue squad and we'll run the bill up to $20 million a year because I can do that, because the general statutes say I can do that. That's not working with the local board.
Mr. Coulson, I just simply told you what the statute, what the statute... Commissioner Coulson, I'm sorry. I just told you what the general statute basically says in a nutshell. I am not threatening anyone. I'm telling you what the general statutes dictates as to the sheriff's authority, as to the board's authority. And if I can't help that you take that as a threat, I'm just letting you know that's what the general statutes basically says.
But you said that you would call the emergency services, the rescue squad. You said that, and that pointed me to what your real intent is. You're gonna get your way as to who is providing the services, good, bad, or indifferent, is gonna be your choice and your choice alone.
Sir, the general statute says that the sheriff is the sole keeper of the jail.
Okay, let's move to Commissioner Nonley as a question.
My question's for the county manager and for county legal counsel. So before us tonight is a discussion. We don't have a contract. We've, it's purported that there's been an agreement in place, but none of us have been able to review it. Legal's not been able to review it, and we don't have it before us. So I guess in a lot of ways, some of this conversation maybe is a little bit preemptive. Important, no doubt, but this is gonna need another setting to whether or not we approve and have a chance to review the current proposal. And so what steps need to happen between now and then for us to be able to consider it? I guess, Matt, from you and also from the county manager's perspective. Because we're not there tonight.
Right, so from my perspective, and from what I heard this evening, there was an agreement reached today. I haven't seen that yet. The current contract requires, allows for an increase consistent with CPI. So from a process perspective, my thought would, I would recommend that you bring back at your next meeting that contract for review and approval by the board. And if this board is so inclined to want to direct an RFP effective July 1, it might make sense to go ahead and provide direction on the timing of that as well.
Madam County Manager.
And that would be at next setting, not tonight.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a contract.
Right, that's why we haven't seen a contract. So taking any action on it tonight, we just can't, so.
Which is why it's discussion.
Right, 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 right.
Not item for decision, Sheriff.
Madam Manager, is three months adequate time to do an RFP? Or is that kinda pushing it? It seems to me that's pushing it. I think it ought to be six months, ought to be a minimum to at least start thinking about it and getting things moving. Because if you wait to three months, you got 90 days. And the next thing you do is you turn around, well, go ahead.
I don't see any harm in the sheriff bringing back a proposed contract with WellPath at your next meeting and an RFP to be effective July 1 for services. I don't think that's unreasonable or out of question.
Madam County Manager, there is no new contract because we are already, we've gone, we are still on the same contract with no changes that you all approved in the last county budget. There is nothing that has changed. They've gotten, we've agreed to the 5% every year that you all, that you all, the county commissioners voted on that budget. They voted for that 5%.
Each year of the contract, though, you brought back an amendment to increase the price. So Financial Services pays, takes the total contract price divided by 12 and pays a monthly fee to WellPath. And at the, the contract provides that in March, by March of each year, if there's gonna be a new number for the next fiscal year, that you agree upon that number and we budget that amount. This year, that wasn't agreed upon by March, so we put in 5%, assuming that an amount would be agreed upon. But last year, for example, it was a one-page contract that modified the price term to include the amount of the increase. And you've done that every time that the price has changed. Otherwise, you'd be preying at the old price. And so, and I think I have those as well. Yeah, so you have the big original three-year contract that provides for a review of pricing consistent with CPI by March of each year. And then last year, for example, it was a very short two-page contract that just increased the price and changed a couple of other terms, but increased the price from 3.131 million to 3.261 million. And so we would be bound by the 3.261 million until such time you change the price by contract. So that would be the contract that I would anticipate would come back for board approval so that we're not locked into a contract at the old pricing. Nothing in the contract requires the price to increase. It provides an opportunity for an increase consistent with CPI as agreed upon by March of that year. The price doesn't have to increase, but it could increase pursuant to the terms of the original master contract. And so we would be at 3.26103625 based on the last amendment to the three-year contract at the amount that you've negotiated consistent with CPI so that that monthly figure could be divided between the 12 months and paid. And I'm open to anybody correcting me if it operates differently than that.
Madam County Manager, if I could have my business manager to review a note from her, I was trying, I wanted, unless you have the information readily available as to what the board approved, the amount that the board approved for this past budget year. She may have it, I'm not sure.
It is about 3.45 million.
That is what the board approved. 3.4, because that was the 5%.
Right, so we took the 3.2, that was the contract amendment approved last year. We added 5% in the budget because we anticipated last year, although it was supposed to be done in March and approved before the budget year, the Board of Commissioners didn't approve it until October 16th of '23 for that year. So we recognized that last year required additional time past the time prescribed in the contract to negotiate it. And so this year, so that you wouldn't be short anticipating the same behavior as the prior year, we budgeted a 5% so that you wouldn't run short based upon the way this has operated each year that this contract has been in effect. So just because we've budgeted that amount of money doesn't mean we pay more than the contractual amount. It means, because you may have come back and said, there's no price increase. Or you may have come back and said, like you did, we're not doing this contract. We want an RFP because we can't come to an agreement on the 22%. And so, yes, there are sufficient funds currently budgeted to cover an increase in a contract up to an additional 5% over last year's cost. But I don't have a contract in place that authorizes me to pay that additional cost. That contract would have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
I will get that to you as patiently.
Okay, Commissioner.
I have a question about something Chief said. And he talked, he sets up for about a full-time practitioner. Is that additional this time, was that?
No, ma'am. The previous medical nurse practitioner was in a disadvantaged situation and had to depart from us, and that's how we lost her. And she was very valuable. But of course, that put them in the search for a new nurse practitioner to fulfill the role. And nevertheless, the work never stopped. She, even she continued on for quite some time until they were able to get a new nurse practitioner. And during that time, part of that was telehealth and part of that was on-site. So the services never was interrupted. Nevertheless, she was out of her position technically at the facility, but nevertheless, she was still providing the service. And periodically, she still provided services today.
Okay, so it was not...
Was your question, was it a full-time position?
Well, he said a full-time. I wrote down full-time practitioner. And I was, my question, when he said that, I was wondering, is that an additional position from the beginning of the contract? That's what I'm trying to get at.
No, the nurse practitioner was part of the FTEs in the original contract altogether.
Okay.
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 Any other questions?
I did, I did wanna hear from the county manager on some of the things that, in reference to RFP in the past and all that.
Okay, county manager.
We did do an RFP during the time that Eastern Carolina Medical Services provided the service in the jail. We did do an RFP for the first three-year contract with WellPath. And we have done RFPs, if you go back 20 years, periodically upon expiration of the contract. There were those extension contracts in between that addressed inmate population, addressed services or changes in services, and addressed pricing. But there were RFPs that were done.
So, so where the statute may say, but this board, Board of Commissioners, have asked for RFP and have gotten one every time?
Yes. And I don't think the sheriff is saying, and I won't put words in her mouth, that she's opposed to an RFP for services beginning July 1.
Absolutely.
And maybe the best approach could be this board considering her bringing back the contract as currently negotiated to carry through June 30th of 2025 and at the same time, an RFP to be issued for services effective July 1, 2025. That'll give ample opportunity for any provider to respond and then mobilize prior to July 1.
And those are my words. Yes, yes, ma'am, that is my intent to, that I am not, I am amenable to doing a RFP for the new year for 2025, '26. Have no problem with that.
Since we are in agreement, I'll make a motion that at our next meeting, we have the contract to finish out with WellPath through June 25, and we have the RFP to go ahead and issue for services beginning July 1, '25. Do you want both the RFP and the contract to come back at your next meeting?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to bring back the contract that will finish out the 24, '25 contract with WellPath and an RFP for July 1 services moving forward.
I believe we had already done the RFP. Ms. Gallagher, Madam Gattagor.
I never saw it. So my understanding, my understanding is that you had it prepared to go out in August prior to the continued negotiations, so yeah.
Yeah, you're correct, because we asked to be able to do the RFP.
Yes.
And then we did not feel the need to have to do it. So we will bring that back as well.
I think it's already ready.
It's already done.
I just haven't seen it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we get this, get all of that in our packet before the meeting next time?
Sure.
Sheriff?
Yes, we have the RFP already prepared.
I mean, all of the, and the contract.
The contract and the RFP. And we can certainly include it in your packet. And depending upon when it's provided to me, I could put it in your weekly information packet if you need more time to review it.
Also, I do have the, an amendment addressing the 5% for, that was in the original contract. As a point of note, during last year, the previous year, when they asked for the 5% increase, my position was, things go up for you all, you guys, it goes up for us too. So I was able to get an increase of $25,000 to go towards our cap. So anytime they're asking me for money, I'm asking them for increases because, towards our cap, because prices go up for us as well.
And that's what was included in that amendment. That's what was included in that amendment, the increase in the cap and then the price change. So any other changes like that would also need to be included in that short-form amendment.
It is.
Okay, is everybody clear on the motion? Everybody good? Okay, let's vote then. Commissioner Perkins-Williams. Okay, thank you, Sheriff Dans, thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Okay, we'll move on to items for decision. Madam Manager, I'll turn that over to you.
Yep, the first one, if Ms. Sharon Rochelle will come forward. This is a request that Ms. Rochelle will present. You may recall during budget discussions that she had asked for additional positions in her Child Protective Services Division. And at the time of budget discussions, there were several vacancies within those positions. And we advised her that once those positions were full, if there was a continued need for additional positions, that she could bring it back to the board mid-year. And so I don't wanna steal her thunder or her presentation other than to say she has filled those positions. She remains under a corrective action plan with the state. In order to be relieved from that corrective action plan, there needs to be another unit within Child Welfare Protective Services, which is a supervisor and five workers in order to bring the caseloads down to a manageable level for the safety of the children that they're serving and additionally, to retain the current employees that they have in that unit who are working over duty. Her request for the six new FTEs, the cost would be covered by amounts budgeted to the Department of Social Services in prior years that were not spent and fell back to fund balance into a code called Fund 160. It's general fund balance, but there's enough money in that fund of unspent DSS funds from prior years to cover the cost of this for the remainder of this fiscal year and future years if the board did not so choose to increase the cost of those funds. So in a nutshell, I'm recommending that the board consider these six FTEs for the benefit of the Social Work Investigative Assessment and Treatment Unit in Child Welfare. And I'm sorry if you had a presentation and I just stole it.
I think you just gave it.
You did very well, county manager.
I think you just gave it, ma'am, into calendar. I think you just gave it now into the calendar.
Ms. Gallagher, what you're saying is, if we do not do this, then we will continue, Pitt County DSS will continue to be on a state corrective action plan.
I can say you will continue, you will continue to be on a path with an insufficient number of people to handle the cases. And the, I can't say that we'll absolutely be on the corrective action plan, but we will not have done the steps recommended by the state to get out from the corrective action plan. And so, by doing, by not doing this, there's no chance we'll get out. By doing this, you have a much more likely chance. Now, they have to come in, they have to be trained, and they have to do a good job and meet the state's satisfaction, but I think this is the first step to getting that done.
And the money's there, so no, no new dollars we have to spend.
Correct.
I mean, if the board has no questions, I'll be glad to make the motion.
Any other questions?
I would like to make that motion.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
My question is, now, I want you to hear this very carefully.
Yes, sir.
I'm very concerned about the turnover rate in Social Services. I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about it. And, and, and it's been brought to my attention quite frequently about your retention rate. What has been do, what are you doing about the stability of employees in your department? And, and what, what kind of statistics or any information you can share with, with this board as to what, what are you doing to maintain proper retention rate of your, of employees?
Sure, I'd be glad to answer, but good evening, everyone. So, it'll be coming up on my two-year anniversary in another couple of days.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said, it'll be my two-year anniversary in a couple of days, so I can speak to that very well. Although we've had some turnover, when I first started two years ago, it was much higher than it is now. And the work in and of itself is difficult, and that will never change, because if anything, it just has gotten more complex and more difficult. What I saw that needed to happen is a change in supervision and administration. I've done that. And we've also have a contract with ECU Public, the School of Public Health, and they're coming in and doing resiliency training for our workers. And in addition to that, I have Casey Family, and we are one of the Casey Family Counties, and they're coming in after the first of the year to also do supervisory training at all levels. So, I say that with, the work isn't done, but it's getting there. Our turnover rate is much lower now than it's ever been. I can tell you, my first couple of months in this position, that's all I did was sign resignation letters, and very few have come across my desk. We are actually in a very good situation as far as applicants goes. There, I hear some county directors say that they post their positions and do not get any people to apply at all. And I can tell you that not only do we have many people apply for our positions now, but many of them come with experience from another county. And so, I think we've kind of made that turn as far as the word that's getting out, that we are a good place to work, that we do support our staff, and that we're heading in the right direction. So, I'm feeling very confident and hopeful, I will tell you, especially in Child Protective Services. It is set up on the fourth floor of this building. There's definitely a different feel up there. I've had workers say that they would sit in their car before having to come into work, debating whether or not they could do it another day. They're coming in now happy, know the work is the same, but it's just a totally different culture and environment.
Commissioner Hergens?
Well, I just want to echo the same thing that Commissioner McGlaughorn said about the turnover rate. I too have gotten calls from employees who were still in their probationary period that were let go. So, if you're saying your, your turnover rate is changing, I'm glad to hear. And I hope that with the, in the supervision, the supervisors in that, that group, that we are doing some kind of training to improve that environment, because what I heard was that, that working in DSS was toxic, was a toxic environment.
Yes, and, and so, all of those things are, we're in the process of it right now. So, and the interesting thing, when Casey comes in, they're going to be looking at all levels of supervision. So, it'll be the direct supervisor, it will be a program manager, a program administrator, and I myself will also have training so that we're all speaking the same language, walking and talking the same talk.
Okay, Commissioner Coulson?
The only thing I would, it's an extremely high-stress job. I appreciate that. I could not do the job. I've had some of the people that are in it tell me a little bit about it, and I'm going, gee, I was in a combat zone, and maybe it wasn't quite as stressful as being shot at. But do they get any chance to rotate out of that for some period of time, a break, two months, three months, do another job that's well worth doing, so they can catch their breath before they go back in there? Or do we just leave them in that environment continuously until they finally burn out? I'm just making a statement. You don't necessarily have to answer it. It's just concerning to me.
And Commissioner Coulson, I, I hear what you're saying, and I wish that we could have been at a point, at least since I've been here, I can't speak about prior to that, that we would have had that opportunity to be able to do that. We do take folks out of rotation, so they would, instead of getting the reports, that the reports are coming in, we give them a little bit of a break to be able to catch up on their paperwork and that type of thing, and we try to rotate that fairly.
But they're still in the trenches.
That's right.
That's, that's my point.
Yes.
They're continuously in the trenches.
I think with this additional staff, I think we're actually going to be able to start doing some social work with our families rather than going in, making our decisions, and moving forward. And there's different, so when someone goes in and does an investigation, they're going in and assessing the situation. And depending what that investigation shows, that family, let's say there's a high risk, that case would go to an in-home services worker to provide ongoing services. Sometimes, it's just connecting people with services within the community. And so, I say that with, we're also trying to do some things more on the preventive side. So, I have one preventive worker right now who strictly does prevention. And so, it's not about, you know, going in and doing an investigation per se, but what can we do prior to that CPS call being made to prevent that CPS call from being made? And so, I'm trying to work on different opportunities for us to be able to do that. One of the first things I'm going to tackle is look at child fatalities, specifically infant deaths, to see what else can we do to prevent that. Do the safe sleep, make sure that families have, you know, port a crib, you know, be more supportive to moms who maybe are expecting that have younger children. What else can we do to be able to support them so when the baby does come, they have what they need? So, I'm really starting to, I'm, I'm starting to turn that corner. I've not been able to do that until recently.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. If there's no further discussion, let's vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam Manager, we'll move on to the Animal Services Advisory Board.
Yes, you have two vacancies on the Animal Services Advisory Board. Both are at-large positions. One has traditionally been held by a veterinarian. The Animal Services Advisory Board has a letter in your packet on page fifty-two. They are recommending the nomination of Charlie Edwards to serve on the Animal Services Advisory Board in one of those at-large seats. And they did not make a recommendation, they requested delaying the appointment of the second seat until a veterinarian or veterinarian technician can be recruited. In conversation with the county attorney today, we can't advertise it for a veterinarian or a vet tech because the seat attribute is just at-large. So, you have the choice of filling one this evening and waiting until somebody applies who happens to be a veterinarian, or you have the option to appoint two, and the applications are in your packet. You've not had a shortage of applications, and this has run for months for these positions. So, you have a good number of applications in your packet if you want to point your second seat or hold off for additional applications.
I'd like to just go ahead and nominate the initial one, Charlie Edwards.
I'd like to fill both seats. We, I mean, those, those seats have been open, and we've got people that are, people are volunteering.
Well, it's solving all the problems.
We did want to, the timer together.
Let's do them together. Who, who do you have?
Tonya Dennis.
Okay. Who did, who did you have? I'm sorry.
Well, the recommended.
Okay, so we have the recommended person, and then we have Tonya Dennis.
What district is Tonya Dennis?
Madam Manager, question?
Yes.
So, if we fill all the seats, and then, two months, three months from now, somebody comes up that's a veterinarian, and they would like to be on it, how difficult is it for this board to amend the number of seats that are in that body? Could they do it?
Yes, and in fact, you've done it in the past. One time, you added an additional seat for Ms. Beth Sanchez, who had interest in canine control for a period of time. And you also have a vacancy coming up on this board in February. And so, if a veterinarian should come, you could fill your next at-large seat in February. Brittany Dale has served her maximum number of terms and will cycle off the board, so you may be able to fill a new vacant seat, or you may be able to add a seat if you'd like.
I think Mark's right. Let's fill both of them.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second for Charlie Edwards and Tonya Dennis. Okay, we'll move on to reappointments to the Pitt County Planning Board, Madam Manager.
Yes, this is another one where you'll need to make a choice. The planning board does not recommend appointments. And so, for this one, it is recommended that you nominate Lyman Hardy and Charles McGlaughorn for reappointment to the Pitt County Planning Board. And then, of those listed on your packet on pages seventy-five and seventy-six, you need to select four more.
I'd like to recommend Rita Jackson.
Is that Rita Jackson?
Rita Jackson.
Okay, so we have...
District two.
District two.
Who was the other one, other than Lyman Hardy that you mentioned?
Charles McGlaughorn.
Okay.
And those two would be reappointment. And then, the next four would be new appointments in open seats that were created by people rolling off who did not choose to serve again or serve their max terms.
And are those reappointments, like, their terms haven't expired, or is there not maybe any exceptions?
Correct, no exceptions.
Okay, so we got Lyman Hardy, Hardy and Charles McGlaughorn on reappointments, and then we have a recommendation for Rita Jackson. So, we need three more, is that correct?
Correct. And they're listed on page seventy-five and seventy-six, if you want to take a look at those.
I haven't had another person to contact me, but Wanda, where? You said page seven?
Seventy-five and seventy-six. So, all of the applications are included, but because there were so many, we listed them for you in the summary of information. If you look on page seventy-six at the top, that's a list of all of your applicants by district.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Michael Best.
Okay, Michael Best.
Wanda Nguyen.
Is that Wanda? Wanda, how do you spell that last name?
Nguyen, W-Y-N-N-E.
Okay.
Are we making sure that we are equally representing all the districts in Pitt County?
District three is not...
The title is our front button.
Is district, and it can only be one person?
Oh, so you need one from B, one from five, and one from two?
Correct.
And then, how about the fourth one?
Yes.
C?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, so you need one from B, one from C, one from two, and one from five?
Correct.
Okay, Michael Best is from C.
Okay, and you want Rita Jackson Gilbert from two?
Yes.
So, we'll take Wanda Nguyen off.
Share.
Sharon Gray.
Sharon Gray.
From three.
Okay, and then, you need somebody from district five at the bottom.
Michael was, I think Michael White was on there?
Yes.
How about Michael White?
Yeah, Michael White is up there.
But that's not him, that's just one of the last.
And that's five. Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
So, just to go through, we got Lyman Hardy, Charles McGlaughorn reappointments, we got Rita Jackson from district two, Michael Best from C, Sharon Gray from district three, Michael White from district five. Everybody good with that? We have a motion for those? Got a motion and a second, okay?
Are we voting now?
Yes, ma'am.
And if I could say, since I'll be rotating off the board, I've been on the animal control board as the liaison for the board for, gosh, forever. And I've enjoyed it, and I hope that one of you will ask to actually be on that board. It's a good board. It really is. It's a compassionate board.
Who would you recommend on this board?
Any of you that feels so led to be on it.
I'll do it, I'll, I'll...
All right, we got one, Lauren, Lauren said she loves animals. I nominate Lauren.
That'll be the chairman's appointment in September.
We'll, we'll keep that in mind for the, for the new chairman. Okay, moving on to item four, appointment, reappointment to Pitt County Nursing, Home, Adult Care, Home Community Advisory Committee.
It is recommended that you nominate Dolores Nobles for appointment and Josie Bowman for reappointment to that board.
I moved it, we do.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, and then, reappointment to the Aiden Planning Board.
It is recommended that you nominate Sarah Coltrane for reappointment to the Aiden Planning Board.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, please vote.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Sarah Coltrane.
Sarah Coltrane.
I moved it. I moved it.
Sorry, Kimberly, moving a little fast there. Okay, and then, item six, appointments to the Pitt Greenville Convention of Business Authority.
So, move the recommendations. Brittany Parker and Stacy Moore.
Got a motion and a second on those. Please vote. Okay, we are up to Commissioner comments. I'll start to my right with Commissioner Ward.
Comments, thank you.
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Coulson?
I've said enough tonight.
Well, I want to wish Dr. Earl Sherbaiton happy birthday. He just celebrated one hundred and one years old. And also, our former president, Jimmy Carter, one hundred years old. So, those are the two birthdays.
That's right. Thank you. Commissioner White?
Happy birthday.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
No comment.
I'd like to wish concern about the residents out in Asheville, and I pray that they will find the hope that they need, but a new. I understand when tragedy happens, that you just can't replace things. And so, I wish we could do something, but I think we're doing the best by wishing them our care and prayers.
Thank you. Madam Manager, anything in closing?
Nothing in closing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, but...
I'd like to move to close.
Got a motion and a second. Thank you all.
Y'all are nice.